Okay, I'd like to call the meetings of the fourth quarter of June 12th, Board of Education meeting. Everybody please stand for the pledge.
I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America, to consider public relationships and formation honorable in the interest of the reading of its laws.
Okay, we'll call Jonathan Kerber.
Here.
Michelle Kaiser.
Here.
David Pinter.
Here.
Michael Wensworth.
Here.
Shish Kraskey.
Here.
Amy Mahoney.
Here.
Erin Gobert.
Here.
Thank you.
Okay, the exits are to our right and left and then one behind us to the right. I'd like to get a motion to approve the agenda as presented for amended. Mike, Patty, call in favor? Aye. Seven zero. Subject 3.1, can I please get a motion to approve the minutes of the May 16th business meeting as presented at this meeting? Dave, Mike, any discussion? Call in favor? Aye. That's a seven zero. Hand it over to Sarah, Stevens, and your boards.
Good evening, everybody. We're gonna begin tonight with our principal reports. Our podium has been filled for this evening, so... Connelly, the elementary school principal is going to present our elementary school.
Good evening, everyone. While it is hard to believe that the days of the 22, 23 school year, the end of the days are here, and with them come a lot of end of the year events and celebrations. First off, in preparation for moving up, our third grade traveled to the middle school to get a tour of the building and meet with members of the Junior National Honor Society to learn about student life as fourth graders. Thanks to these students, Mr. Kamor, the advisors, Ms. Chapman, Ms. Rasmussen, for taking the time to show us around and answer all of our questions. Next, on June 2nd, Coach Bosfield did an excellent job in his inaugural Year of Planning and Hosting Elementary School Field Day. Classes circulated through 10 Action Pack stations and our always supportive and helpful PTSA and parent volunteers assisted with supervising these and providing water and ice pops to keep everyone cool. I'd also like to thank the Elks Club for their generous donation of hamburgers and hot dog lunch, the use of their pavilion, and to our Greenwood Lake Food Services and custodial teams for all their hard work on this event. Then on June 7th, our Elementary Drama Club presented their production entitled "It's a Jungle Out There", to all grade levels during the day, and held an evening performance for the families of the cast. This adorable play followed the queen of the jungle's search to find the secret of happiness, and while various animal groups suggested it was parties and laughing and playing video games, the thoughtful old elephants reminded us that stopping to smell the roses in the company of good friends is what will truly lead us to happiness. I'd like to say thank you to Ally and Emily Creighton for months and months of before and after school rehearsals and all of their coaching and choreography, graphic skills, and to the middle school for loaning us some trees from past place to incorporate into our sets. And lastly, to Mr. Pignatare for filming the play and posting it to the Greenwood Lake website. And just last Friday, June 9th, our whole school traveled to the Town Beach Waterfront Pavilion to take our annual panoramic photo and enjoy the beauty of our community while we enjoyed lunch with many of the parents who came to meet up with us for a picnic on the Green. And this week is really busy as well. We have a third grade Hallmark trip to the Bronx Zoo to look forward to tomorrow. The ES Spring Concert on Thursday with kindergarten and first performing at 12:30, and second and third graders taking the stage at 1:45. And then Moving Up Day on Friday, the 11th, and I invite you all to come and celebrate the wrapping up of this school year. Thank you so much.
Well, Principal, Mr. Kamor.
Good evening. Evening. It has been a wonderful spring here so far at the middle school, and I see lots of our educators out in the audience. I hear we say that in the last few weeks of school, we literally get months of work done, so thank you to all of our educators here for putting that work in. Since we last saw each other, our students had a wonderful time at the seventh and eighth grade formal. The school looked fantastic, the kids were great. Our spring music concert was wonderful. Our NJHS students volunteered at the Hudson Valley Fruit Pantry, and our music and band students competed at the Music in the Parks Festival this past week at Dorney Park, both coming in first place. Our chorus and band did a fantastic job. We did conclude our science testing, our New York State testing. Grades three through eight concluded here at the middle school last week. And our modified athletics finished up the year with our athletic awards. I brought tonight a little memento new this year is the Greenwood Lake varsity letter. Typically, varsity athletes, when they graduate, receive that letter. And I shared with our kids that our students go off to be Hamiltonians or Wildcats or Eagles or wherever they go off to, but this is reminding that they're always Lakers. So this went in a picture box, and the kids can either hang that or eventually, when they get their varsity leather jacket, they can take that out and put it somewhere on their jacket. So that was really nice to celebrate our eighth grade student athletes. And coming up here, we have our testing week here at the middle school this week for our seventh and eighth graders. And we also do have two regents exams that we offer in our honors track for our living environment and algebra exams. Those are on Wednesday and Thursday this week. Our field day, due to the issues last week with the weather, was moved to this Friday. And our eighth grade picnic, of course, we're offering at school this coming Monday. Our picnic for our eighth graders will be at the lake is on this Tuesday. The honor roll and academic awards are on Wednesday, the 21st. A reminder to families that the 22nd is a half a day of school. And graduation is that Thursday evening, followed by our last day of school, our turnaround day on the 23rd. And of course, report cards will be mailed home on the 23rd. We're looking forward to our wonderful close to the year with graduation on the 22nd at 6:30 outside. Our backup plan, obviously, if there's weather, will be indoors. Public service announcement to our graduate families for parking. Every graduate family is guaranteed one parking spot here on campus. Our students will get tickets for that, and any remaining spots is first come, first served. And then, once the lot is full, overflow parking will be at the American Legion. We thank them for allowing us to do that, and we'll shuttle anybody that meets the park there. So that's all for this evening. Thank you.
Now, to begin the part of the evening that most of you are all here for, the retirement recognitions and the tenure celebrations. So Mrs. Connelly and I are going to speak as they've been. All right, so... So this evening, we have two retirees that we're going to recognize. Mrs. Connelly is going to speak, and then I'm going to speak about each of our retirees. We'll invite them up to come get a picture and a small token of appreciation for their time here with us. And then I have a short video for them, and then we'll move on to the tenure recognition ceremony. So Mrs. Connelly, we are first going to talk about Mr. Jamie.
So Mr. Jamie, as he is so fondly referred to, has been responsible for the safety and security of our entire elementary school community for the past eight years. As a previous New York City police officer, he brought advanced training, situational knowledge, and his excellent judgment through our doors and put them to work every day when closely monitoring all our entrances, checking identification credentials for those entering the building, executing arrival and dismissal procedures to ensure student safety, and playing a vital role on our safety team in the drilling of our emergency response protocols. In these frightening times where incidents of school violence frequent the headlines, I think I speak for my entire staff when I say we have all had a great degree of comfort knowing that Jamie was manning the security desk and that he is our first line of defense. If that was all that he did, we'd be abundantly thankful. But Mr. Jamie contributes so much more to our school life, and it goes well beyond his job description and contract expectations. Of most importance to mention is his devotion to our students' wellbeing. He greets children as they pass through the halls or play on the playground and takes the time and initiative to check in with those he notices may seem a little off or may be having a tough day. He serves as a role model for good manners and respectful behavior to us all. We all know Jamie loves the game of golf, as do I. And last year, he volunteered to stay after work to help me give a trial run of a club that aligned character development skills with the teaching of introductory golf skills to some of our most behaviorally challenged students. And this was just one of many examples of ways that he gives of himself for the service of others. Jamie is a team player and always willing to have some fun with the whole school events and activities. He and Officer Ritchie had the kids eagerly searching for the lucky Laker leprechaun who would be captured only to break out of their high-security jail on a daily basis before running through Jamie's legs and escaping out the front door for good. Jamie also has flapped his wings as a partridge in a pear tree at our holiday sing-along and worn costumes for our annual Halloween parade. He'll do whatever is asked of him if it'll make the kids happy and contribute to a positive school culture. For all these reasons, no typical security guard will ever be able to fill your shoes, Jamie. We will miss everything about you and the excellent service you provided to us all. Our loss is North Carolina's gain. Wishing you, Jen, and your beautiful family good health and happiness all the days of your lives. And in the immortal words of Ben Hogan, "As you walk down the fairway of life, you must smell the roses, or you only get to play in one round." Here's to enjoying some well-deserved U-time and whatever makes your heart happy. God bless you, Jamie.
So I would ask for our students, any of our students, kindergarten through eighth grade, who James Connelly was, I don't think a single one of them would know. This is because former Officer Connelly, to us, was belovedly called Mr. Jamie. And as you can see in the pictures on the screen, being Mr. Jamie is an entire personality unto itself. Mr. Jamie was the first face our students saw almost every day, a face that was always smiling. I don't know how he did it, but every single day was a great one for Mr. Jamie. His hugs and his high fives are infamous. He knows every student, and he knows every student's story. He knows who to give extra attention to, he knows when to praise and when to use a stern voice, which was rare because the children naturally respect him and listen to him. He has the exact right attitude for working with young children, and I hope he finds a similar path in his next career. When it comes to the security of the school, Mr. Jamie was a top-notch resource, identifying weak spots. He was integral in the decision to move all students to one location during fire drills for easier monitoring and identification. His attention to the cameras and what was happening on all sides of the building was paramount to my being able to trust the safety of everyone in the building whenever he was present. I'm just sorry he's not going to be able to see the new updated super-high-definition cameras we're putting in next year, which he held a start planning for in probably his second or third year with us. I know you would have loved it and used it to its fullest extent. When I was principal at the elementary school, Mr. Jamie and I would have a saying whenever I had to head to the middle school for a meeting, seven minutes. It meant no matter what, it would never take me more than seven minutes to get back to the elementary school if he needed me. But now, with him moving away, I can't help but think, but what if I need him? There's no more seven minutes, it's now seven hours. And while that brings me a tinge of heartache, I know he and Jen will build a marvelously, marvelously happy life down south, and that brings me joy. Thank you, Jamie, for never seeing this role as just a security guard, for infusing your whole entire self into our community, for going above and beyond on a daily basis, and for truly becoming a Laker through and through. Congratulations on your recension.
Kathy Crozier. Okay, Kathy Crozier. I'd like to start off by saying there's a special place in heaven for those who teach kindergarten, and especially when you've done so for 32 years. Kathy has certainly earned her wings having been the warm, caring, always-smiling introduction to school for so many of our Laker children and their families. After teaching the same grade level for so many years, Kathy could easily show up to school empty-handed, create lessons on the fly, and stop all efforts to improve her teaching craft. But that's one of the things that has impressed me the most about her. She has an incredible work ethic. If Kathy's going to do something, she's going to do it to the best of her ability, and whether it's her first day or her 5,760th day, and yes, that is the amount she'll have when she's taught her last day here. She is often one of the first to arrive and usually one of the last to leave each day because she holds herself accountable for her students' academic success and wants to prepare all of her lessons to be their very best. I kid her because, like a brand-new teacher, she still gets nervous when being observed. But she needed me because every time I enter her classroom, I see thoughtful, engaging, hands-on learning activities and happy children who just love coming to school every day. And kids aren't the only ones who love coming to school because of Kathy. Our entire staff appreciates her kindness and consideration, her willingness to help out whenever there's a need, and of course, her amazingly delicious baked goods that have graced every faculty gathering over the years. We have one last event coming up before the end of this school year, and on the Google signup sheet next to Kathy's name, it reads, "You've got to make brownies one more time, please." Kathy, you and I have had a lot of friendly side chats after hours. I know of the passions that make your heart sing, and I love how your face shines with enthusiasm whenever you're talking about them. First and foremost is your family, husband Ken, son Kyle, daughter Carissa, and of course, your fur babies Shay and Holly. I love hearing all about the kids' careers and your trips and family adventures and your successful quest for therapy dog certification. You combined your love of teaching and reading and your belief in the power of therapy dogs when introducing the Paws to Read Club several years ago, and it has grown into a treasured extracurricular program that will continue to be offered in the years to come. Kathy, your daily influence on all of us will be sorely missed, but we do expect to see you and Shay back here as Paws to Read volunteers so you can continue to enrich and gladden the lives of our little learners. And we'll keep in mind the words of Dr. Seuss, "Don't cry because it's over, smile because it happened." So instead of goodbye, we'll say, "Go and be free to explore what makes your heart happy, knowing that you've been a wonderful teacher and friend and have made a difference in the lives of so many children throughout your long and highly valued career here at Greenwood Lake."
Kathy Crozier began her career 33 years ago right here in Greenwood Lake in kindergarten. And there she has stayed, making a true difference for literally generations of children. Kindergarten is the hardest grade level to teach, bar none, and no one will ever convince me otherwise. Hold on. I just want to be able to see what I talk to you. And Kathy dedicated her entire career to this incredibly important role, perfecting it along the way. I recently went through her five-inch-thick HR file, and no, I'm not joking. You can learn a lot about a person by going through their HR file. She came in with no less than nine typed letters of reference, each one of which praised her with some of the same exact phrases I'd use today. "Active member of the faculty," "Carries out new ideas," "Proud to be a teacher," "Paces her lessons to student abilities and capabilities," "Goes out of her way to do extras for children," "Takes pleasure in finding new ways to teach students." What an accomplishment for that to be as true on day one of your career as it is on the last day of your career. Most of you know Mrs. Crozier started our Visiting Therapy Dog Initiative several years ago when we did the explorations. She was very nervous when she first came to speak to me about it. But that program has flourished, as did the students in her classroom. When the dogs in explorations weren't enough, she brought them into her own classroom. And when that still wasn't enough, in terms of getting as many kids to read as often as possible, she began a school-wide club where students read to dogs, which became so popular, Shay had to do the club in shifts with different groups of students. While looking through her file, I realized the love of animals has always been a part of who Kathy is. She may not even remember this. Do you know what I'm gonna say? And the recommendation from her teacher advisor, who said that Kathy was one of the strongest of over 300 teachers she had ever observed. The advisor, in her reference letter, mentioned Kathy's grace and sensitivity when the class pet duck passed away, and Kathy held an impromptu funeral on the day of the observation. It seems animals and children have always been a passion of yours. Kathy, you are and seem to have always been the epitome of what any administrator would want when hiring a teacher, what any teacher would want in a colleague, what any parent would want for their child, and most importantly, what any child would want in a teacher. You are a living legend, exemplary in every way. And yes, I meant it a few years ago when I called you a master teacher, and you didn't like it. Thank you for dedicating your career to the Greenwood Lake community. I will miss you, we will all miss you. Congratulations on your well-deserved retirement. I have a very quick video. The students and community of Greenwood Lake also wanted to be able to say a little something.
Hi, Mr. Jamie, thanks for everything.
He showed it all his ball tricks.
You guys are so familiar with security. Did you see those ones wish you?
Happy retirement!
Hi, Mrs. Crozier, you are the best teacher, and I will miss you.
Hi, Mrs. Crozier, thank you for teaching me in the early. I love you and I will miss you.
Thank you for the job, Mrs. Crozier.
Mrs. Crozier, I'll miss you.
Kathy Crozier, thanks for doing the best kindergarten trip. Did you see those ones wish you?
Happy retirement!
So congratulations. Congratulations, Mr. Jamie and Mrs. Crozier. All right, moving right on. Okay, subject 5.1, can I please get a motion to prefer tenure upon Nicole Gosher in the Biology 7-12 tenure, effective September 1st, 2023? Mike, Dave, pause.
Mrs. Gosher, Nicole Gosher is up for receiving tenure here tonight as a seventh and eighth grade science teacher. Nicole is here tonight with her husband Dylan, and Nicole is a native of Bogota, Columbia. She moved to the States in high school, graduating from Middletown High, before heading off to New Paltz for her undergraduate work in molecular and cellular biology. In a former life, Nicole spent some time as an EMT while obtaining her master's degree from the prestigious Teachers College at Columbia University, also with biology. Nicole is a remarkable find for us here at Greenwood Lake and has all the intangibles of a wonderful teacher and person. She's kind, funny, brilliant, and passionate about her work. She taught in New York City and Manhattan for three years before coming to Greenwood Lake four years ago. Nicole has a tremendous growth mindset and seeks ways to add value beyond the classroom. She has spent her summers in California instructing students through the Johns, John Hopkins Center for Talented Youth. When I asked Nicole what she loves about Greenwood Lake, without hesitation, she said, "I really enjoy connecting with our students, especially outside of the classroom. I love our offerings and our clubs, coaching, and running things like the mindfulness and meditation club. I really love all the access to nature that we have and that our students enjoy, taking advantage of the outdoors." Nicole launched a new initiative this year, taking students back to the Ashokin to participate in a sustainability conference and led trips to local science labs. She is also coached in our cross-country and track and field programs. She's a dynamic educator and leader, has a packed caseload teaching all of our seventh and eighth grade science students, running labs, and teaches our Advanced Living Environment Regents class. Nicole is also here with her teammates, as she is a great educator and widely respected by her colleagues. We are lucky to have you here at Greenwood Lake, and congratulations, Nicole Gosher.
So while Ms. Gosher approaches Mr. Kamor, go ahead, and we can have the board vote.
Any discussion? Call in favor? Aye. Aye. Motion passes seven zero. Subject 5.2, can I please get a motion to prefer tenure upon Kelly Hines in the Elementary Education tenure, effective September 1st, 2023? Mike, Patty?
Kelly came to us with a good amount of teaching experience after serving in long-term special education lead replacement positions at both Gosher and the Laurel Woodbury Central School. at both Gosher and the Laurel Woodbury Central School Districts. She demonstrated her knowledge of differentiated instruction, classroom management, and the teaching of ELA and math curriculums when we hired her to fill a first-grade long-term lead position in September of 2018. She quickly became a valued team member as she consistently demonstrates best teaching practices and collaborates daily with her colleagues to plan units and share her professional knowledge. So when a probationary track position became available in that same grade level, we knew we already had an exemplary candidate. She brings a young and fun perspective to her classroom lessons, and her students are motivated by units that incorporate their interests. She insists on hard work and diligently meets with small groups to meet student needs, to meet students where they are, and support individual growth. Outside the classroom, Kelly enjoys spending time with her family and friends, going on target TJ Maxx and dunking runs, and laying by the pool in the summertime. It is with great pleasure that Board of Men members, it's my distinct honor to recommend Kelly Hines for tenure.
Any discussion? All in favor? Aye. Motion passes 7-0. Okay, subject 5.3. May I please get a motion to confer tenure upon Natalie Van Kuren in the Guidance Council of Tenure Area effective September 1st, 2023? Aaron, Mike?
Prior to COVID, in Greenwood Lake, Ms. Van Kuren served as Guidance Counselor for the Tuxedo University School District, where she provided group and individual counseling services to address social-emotional needs, lead weekly classroom guidance lessons for grades K to 6, and assist with counseling to address conflict resolution and classroom behavior issues, and hounded weekly focus groups targeting areas of specific needs such as study and social skills. She also brought experience from working at both Inspire Kids and the Orange County Regional Medical Center, where she gained valuable skills in supporting children with intensive needs and those in crisis. Applying this background knowledge, Ms. Van Kuren seamlessly collaborated with our middle school guidance staff to extend and grow our guidance program to address our K through 3 student population's needs quickly and with excellent results. Her presence during arrival and dismissal, in hallways and classrooms, and during lunch and recess waves allows her to glean deep insight into both individual and group needs. Ms. Van Kuren understands that behavior is a form of communication and works tirelessly with all students to develop the awareness and coping tools to create a positive school culture for all. Her outreach programs and resources for parents have greatly enhanced our homeschool connection. Outside of the classroom, Ms. Van Kuren enjoys spending time with her family and especially time spent playing with her nephews and nieces. She also really enjoys crafts and completing sewing projects. Board of Men members, it is my distinct pleasure to recommend Natalie Van Kuren for tenure.
Any discussion? All in favor? Aye. Motion passes 7-0. Subject 5.4. May I please get a motion to confer, confer tenure upon Ann Westfall in the Teaching Assistance tenure area effective September 1st, 2023? Aaron, Ian? Eric?
It's my pleasure to speak to you tonight, recommending Ann Westfall. Ann is recommended for tenure as a teacher's aide, and she is here tonight with her husband Derek and her daughter Quinn. Prior to Greenwood Lake, Ann worked in advertising at the Times-Herald Record and began working as a substitute within the district. She's actually been with us for six years total as she was then hired as a teaching assistant. She began as a TA at the elementary school, working in the first and second grades, and then as a one-to-one. At the middle school, she truly wears so many hats. Our TAs cover many student-facing responsibilities, from working as a one-to-one aide, supporting classrooms, covering things like detention and in-school suspension, and from time to time, especially since COVID, are asked to cover teaching assignments when we are short. In a building like ours, that means working with elementary students and middle-level students. Each of these responsibilities requires a specific skill set, and sometimes to cover all of them could take several people to do. But Ann, not only can she cover each of them, she is excellent in each area. She has the skills to work in a one-to-one setting, in small groups. She truly can cover any room in the building and is often charged with our most challenging tasks. Talked to Ann for several minutes about her work, and it is evident why she is able to do all of this. When asking Ann what she loves about our schools, she speaks of our small setting, the community feel, and she has worked with this cohort for many years, so she knows all of our students. Ann knows that our business is about building relationships. She knows our kids, she's always right there to jump in with whatever is needed. Ann, we are very lucky to have you here at Greenwood Lake. Congratulations, and we proudly recommend Ann Westfall for tenure.
Any discussion? All in favor? Aye. Motion passes 7-0. Okay, subject 6.1. May I please get a motion to recess for 10 to 15 minutes for the business meeting and recognition of our tenure staff and retirees. We have cupcakes and coffee. Michelle, Aaron, any discussion? All in favor? Aye. Motion passes 7-0. Everybody enjoy cupcakes and coffee. Please get a motion to return to the normal business meeting. Mike, Patty, all in favor? Aye. And skipped over, after the superintendent's presentation, we just skipped over the board member presentations, if anybody has anything. So, more, does anyone else? So, the first thing on here is Bisba?
Uh, nothing new, they wrapped up the session. Um, basically that's about it. And they have a new resolution down. Um, we're looking at the website if you want to.
Last Sunday was the end of your dinner, I was unable to attend. But they recognized all the out-of-law members. Phil Hawes was gracious enough to acknowledge Matt Hawley, our former president. Just let everyone know that he resigned after he became mayor of Greenwood Lake. And that was nice of him. So, other than that, to you, September.
Okay, facilities, Aaron? So, I mean, everything is moving along with the facilities. Obviously, everything at the elementary school has finally been completed, that's all closed out. All the projects that we have slated are all starting this year, the new video cameras, the doors at the elementary school, and the two roofs that we're replacing here. And locks throughout, sorry, I should have included that, the doors with all the new locks, with the axes and parts are going to be all installed this summer. And then we did have something pop up with one of the boilers here at the middle school that we thought we weren't going to have any more facilities meetings throughout the summer, but we might need to have one additional meeting to figure out how to proceed, and we'll, of course, share that with everybody once we determine what we need to do. Budget Committee?
Uh, we had Janice Stern, Howard Stern, the moderator, come in, and they'll be back in July. And that's pretty much it for one week.
Policy Committee, I know you guys met.
We actually did today. Uh, we have something later, probably be on the agenda for applying some reordings on policies that we've put out. Um, we're just trying to test something for back in the fall.
Budget Committee for this year?
Passed.
Thank you, thank you to the residents of Greenwood Lake for voting to pass that. Chester High School? Warwick?
Um, tomorrow is the last official day for high school of the 2022-23 school year. Regents are rest of this week and next week, so just to make sure, ask the child where the regents are, or check the parent portal, it will be on there. Buses are provided, so your child just goes in, takes the regent, and then they leave, and buses to a program like are provided. Other than that, congratulations to all the graduates. Best of luck in your future.
Thank you. I don't see any way here from the PTSA for the Village of Greenwood Lake. Does anybody have any?
Yes, I spoke with Kelly now.
Okay. Thank you.
The PTSA is looking for new members of their executive committee for the 23-24 school year. Please reach out to them on their Facebook page if you are interested in running for one of those positions.
Okay, moving along, subject 7.1, privilege of the floor. Don't see anybody in the audience that would like to have the floor, so we're gonna move along. Subject 8.1. May I please get a motion to accept the results of the 2023-2024 annual budget vote and election as presented? Aaron, Ian? Any discussion? Sarah?
I just want to say thank you again to the board, entire board, as well as to the Budget Committee, who dedicated a lot of hours to developing the budget, and a lot of appreciation to the Greenwood Lake community for their overwhelming support of the election that they passed with over 85% approval ratings, which is huge. So, thank you to the Greenwood Lake community.
Any discussion? All in favor? Aye. Motion passes 7-0. Subject 9.1. May I please get a motion to approve the May 2023 financial report as presented at this meeting? Michelle, Mike, any discussion? All in favor? Aye. Motion passes 7-0. Subject 9.2. May I please get a motion to approve the 2023-2024 for registration meeting calendar and approve the date of the organizational meeting as presented? Aaron, Mike, any discussion? All in favor? Aye. Motion passes 7-0. Subject 9.3. May I please get a motion to approve the intermunicipal agreement between the district and the Village of Greenwood Lake as presented? Mike, Dave, any discussion? All in favor? Aye. Motion passes 7-0. Subject 9.4. May I please get a motion to approve the fifth amendment agreement to terms and conditions of employment for the Assistant Superintendent of Business as presented? Aaron, Mike, any discussion? All in favor? Aye. Motion passes 7-0. Subject 9.5. May I please get a motion to approve the HR consultant agreement with our Terry McSweeney as presented? Aaron, Patty, any discussion? All in favor? Aye. Motion passes 7-0. Subject 9.6. May I please get a motion to approve the SMOA for summer enrichment between the district and the GLTA as presented? Mike, Dave, any discussion? All in favor? Aye. Motion passes 7-0. Subject 9.7. May I please get a motion to approve the Orange Olds for Boces Transportation Co. Transfer Funds as presented? Aaron, Mike, any discussion? All in favor? Aye. Motion passes 7-0. Subject 9.8. May I please get a motion to authorize the superintendent to execute health service agreement as presented? Mike, Dave, any discussion? All in favor? Aye. Motion passes 7-0. Subject 9.8. May I please get a motion to approve Omni-US Employees Benefit Services Agreement Agreement Statement as presented? Aaron, Patty, any discussion? All in favor? Aye. Motion passes 7-0. Subject 9.8. May I please get a motion to appoint Commercial Travelers Insurance Company in New York as the student accident insurance carrier for the 2020? Did I skip something?
There's the number zero.
Oh, 9.10. Oh. 2023-2024 school year. Mike, Dave, any discussion? All in favor? Aye. Motion passes 7-0. Yeah, I'll get this one right. Subject 9.11. May I please get a motion to approve the continuation of reserve funds as presented? Aaron, Michelle, any discussion? All in favor? Aye. Motion passes 7-0. Subject 9.12. A motion to approve school fund additional costs for scanning as presented? Mike, Ian, any discussion? All in favor? Aye. Motion passes 7-0. Subject 9.13. A motion to accept the generous donation from Joan Finn for the John P. Finn Award as presented? Mike, Dave, any discussion? All in favor? Aye. Motion passes 7-0. Uh, subject 9.14. A motion to gratefully accept the generous donation for the school lunch fund from Miss Mazur as presented? Mike, Patty, any discussion? All in favor? Aye. Motion passes 7-0. Once again, we'd like to thank Mrs. Mazur for her generous donation.
I think this is like the...
I don't think it, I think it's been every month this school year. So, thank you very much. Uh, subject 9.15. A motion to accept the donation form art creativity as presented? Patty, Mike, any discussion? All in favor? Aye. Motion passes 7-0. Uh, subject 10.1. A motion to accept with regret the resignation of Susan Lecree as presented? Aaron, Mike, any discussion? All in favor? Aye. Motion passes 7-0. Subject 10.2. A motion to appoint Emma LaRosa as an elementary education teacher as presented? Mike, Dave, any discussion? All in favor? Aye. Motion passes 7-0. Subject 10.3. A motion to appoint Michelle Velez as elementary education teacher as presented? Mike, Michelle, any discussion? All in favor? Aye. Motion passes 7-0. Subject 10.4. May I please get a motion to appoint Michael Wopresky as videographer for the school year as presented? Mike, Dave, any discussion? Thank you, Mike. All in favor? Aye. Motion passes 7-0. Subject 10.5. A motion to appoint the following teachers and teacher aides for this summer enrichment program as presented? Aaron, Mike, any discussion? All in favor? Aye. Motion passes 7-0. Subject 10.6. May I please get a motion to appoint the following staff members for summer committees and professional development as presented? Mike, Patty? Mike, Patty, any discussion? All in favor? Aye. Motion passes 7-0. Subject 11.1, may I please get a motion to accept the CPSE and CSC recommendation as presented at this meeting? Aaron, Michelle, any discussion? All in favor? Aye. Subject 12.1, may I please get a motion to return to executive session? Michelle, Ian, any discussion? All in favor? I'd like to read that first. It's to negotiate conductive pursuit of the Taylor Law involving the custodial union. All in favor? Aye. Motion passes 7-0. I hope you know, return to public session after the executive meeting. Would I close this meeting? Oh, sorry. The next Board of Education business meeting will be held on Monday, July 10th, immediately following the organizational meeting at 6:00 p.m. in the middle school cafeteria. May I please get a motion to return to the meeting? Dave, Mike, Michelle, all in favor? Aye. Motion passes 7-0.